... United States of America, into your honor, for justice, one nation, and under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Both audio and video, Tommy, Mr. Barone. Eight minutes done, is that right?
Minutes. I motion to approve the order of selection minutes of November fifteenth, twenty eighteen, as written.
Second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. I also move to accept the order of selection minutes of November nineteenth, twenty eighteen, as written.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, gentlemen?
Correspondence, December fourth, twenty eighteen, the office received a letter of concern with signatures from residents of Town Farm Road regarding the ongoing noise generated by Palmer Motorsports Track. They are looking for any assistance that Warren can offer in order to mitigate the situation. The office also received a quote from WCAT-TV twelve for the replacement of the new video server controller. The price is thirty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, and will come from their fees and will not have any effect on the taxpayers. The office also received a formal resignation letter from Chief Von Dobber from the Police Department. Detective, I'm sorry. And the office received a monthly report, fire chief for the month of November twenty eighteen. That is it, correspondence.
Just to jump in on number two, I spoke with the Chair of Finance today, maybe Beverly can speak to that, too. They wanted to know if the vote board was interested in taking a vote to kind of formalize it, to approve it, even though it doesn't come from the taxpayer. I mean, we can do...
I don't have any problem with that. They're just looking for something official. And please, you know, be aware that this thirty-four thousand dollars is again paid for by the fees from the cable service, nothing to do with the tax rate or...
It's on our agenda, yeah.
And just...
I make a motion to approve the expenditure of thirty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents for the video server controller for WCAT-TV twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just FYI regarding number one, the lady did come in. We all know it's been probably a two-year ongoing problem with the residents concerned with the noise. But as I had talked to the lady, that, you know, the few periods are long gone by. It's in the town Palmer. The board will have no problem, I don't think, with sending a letter saying that, you know, we do share their concerns, but at this time, there is not a lot that Tom can do on their behalf, unfortunately. You know, the time to do that was when it was first, had all the public meetings and the public hearings and such and such, and they've done all noise studies, and that's unfortunately a problem that Tom has to deal with. We have our own set of problems here in Warren. So as much as we do share their concerns, we will, like I say, send a little note saying that, you know, we do, you know, respect the concerns of our citizens and asking them for any help that they can provide. Okey-dokey. Okay, gentlemen, ratify one year for the local one ninety-five, vote expected. As you all know, we've been ongoing for quite some time now with local police departments rank and file. Their contract has been up since July. We made some headway, and then there were some bumps in the road. And as the office just received on number three, Detective Van Dobber was the point person and the union representative for all the discussions going on, and he is no longer employed by the town of Warren. So we had sat there, we got a couple of things done to give them a one-year contract, and the best option was to start over from the beginning with the full board, with the contingent of the people that are down at the PD. And this is really just something to get us to the next step, where we can end up getting into some serious negotiations on that. That'll end up on being in the best interest of the employees down there and in the best interest of the town. So that's where we are signing tonight. It is just a one-year contract. Like I say, they've been about one for six months now, so basically, we're gonna start right after the holidays to go into negotiations for a three-year contract. There'll be new individuals involved, and the board as a whole will be taking part in that as opposed to one. So I need a motion?
All right. Motion that we ratify the one-year MOA for any EPA local one ninety-five?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? I vote aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't at the meeting. One of the agreements was made, it's my responsibility to answer.
So that's why that is taking place. So we have two votes in favor, one abstention. This will go into effect. Your paperwork done?
It was just a vote.
Just a vote?
It was already settled.
Okay. Okay. Tom?
Yes?
It's your situation, Chairman.
A couple of things. One, just arrived as of Friday, I guess we'll get that one on the table. First off, I had a full-time employee give his resignation letter on Friday. So I am in search of a driver labor. Will the town have any questions or job description, anything, and get in touch with me at four-one-three, four-three-six, seven-six-seven-seven, or the town email, which can be phoned on the website. And the second thing is, is as you guys are aware, we need discussion with the loader. For those of you who might not be aware, our nineteen ninety-six loader is ended up with basically a blown motor. This issue was first discovered and presented to you in the March, early part of April. I had a mechanic looked at it, outside mechanic from the town, as well as a town mechanic. Outside mechanic replaced a head cover gasket because of antifreeze getting into the oil. Was taken apart, and it was discovered that it looked like there was a seam in the head gasket where the coolant was getting into the engine oil. Made the repair, ran the loader, it was going good for a little while, and antifreeze showed up again. So long story short, it is to the point now where the oil is very milky white and the complete engine needs to be rebuilt to correct the problem. I got a quote estimate from the gentleman that did the head gasket, and it's anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for the engine rebuild. And if you're gonna do the engine, it would only make sense to do the transmission, which is another ten to fifteen thousand. So it's approximately thirty thousand dollars to rebuild the engine. I don't know what's gonna arise once you start taking apart. Could be more, could be less, but those are just rough estimates. Machine is twenty-two years old, has well over twelve thousand hours on it. It is time to replace it. Within all of this going on, I've been touched with three major dealerships, John Deere, Caterpillar, and Volvo. I have had two of the machines at the garage and demoed them. The crew drove them as well, and I drove another one in a different town that just recently purchased it. Based on the feedback that we've gotten, we're all kind of partial to one. We're just kind of looking to move forward that aspect, like purchase prices of a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and fifty-four thousand, depending on, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty-nine-three to a hundred and fifty-four, depending on the model. As of right now, with winter here, this is the most vital piece of machine for snow removal. I can load the trucks with the backhoe for the time being if any snow removals involved. I've made arrangements with an outside contractor where we're gonna just hire that machine and operator for removals. If it gets to the point where that machine's needed to plow, because it's the one road in town, Coyle Hill Road, that can have some snowdrifts on it, and the loader is needed up there to open up the road, that owner-operator will perform those tasks as well. So I'm here before you tonight. We've had plenty of discussion with this board. I've been with capital planning a couple of times, with finance on what's going on, but I'm looking to ask to put an article on, on the special town meeting to purchase a new loader.
So for now, we're all set by contracting it out through this winter until we get to the special or...
Until the special or, I mean, it'd be fine now, it just depends on the winter. If it's a normal winter, the fine normal, we could be fine. If we have another winter like two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we're in big trouble. It's just my opinion.
With FinCom's in.
They're in support of the purchase, as far as I know.
And they don't have any issues with the, because I know the last time we had a discussion, Tom, you were waiting to get to talk to a couple...
Yeah, I've got some more figures. There was some talk with FinCom about possibly doing a RAP for a rental, but I think we worked it out where it won't need to do a RAP, because anything it's used for is gonna be snow and ice, and that's the only account that we are fortunate enough to be able to deficit spend on. So there was, you know, there was a couple of options of looking at renting a piece of equipment right off the bat, not relying on a contract, but I think through finance and capital, myself, and even you as a board, can agree that that might not be the best option. I mean, rental prices are monthly, monthly price, like a forty-four hundred, fifty-three hundred, and seventy-five hundred dollars a month. All of those rental fees would go to the direct purchase of that machine, but the problem is now is I can't necessarily get the machine to rent that we wanna buy, which means all of that money wouldn't go towards it, depending on the manufacturing model. So as of right now, from my standpoint, approval to put this on for an article would be most appreciated. I think some of the townspeople would feel the same way as well, and like I said, if it's a, if we don't have any heavy plowing or snow removal, we'd be fine, but if we get some snow, we're in trouble.
This is the only major expenditure that the highway has coming forward to capital this year or...
Yes, and it was planned for capital in twenty-twenty for the past five years.
Twenty-twenty, so we'll have to expand in twenty-nineteen.
How's Dario?
Yep. So capital hasn't voted on this, but they're in favor of the project. Capital stabilization does not have enough funds to cover the price of a hundred fifty thousand in the stabilization. Just a couple of questions I have, which I'm in favor of putting the article on for a new loader, which we discussed last week. What about chapter thirty B, are these state approved vendors? I mean, how long is procurement process gonna take?
All these estate contracts.
State contractors. So with the changes with the state and with the municipal modernization act, you may want a hundred fifty-four thousand dollar loader, so if we put on a hundred fifty-five thousand in the article, technically, you're supposed to, even under state contract, buy at the cheapest price. Is there, or you have to determine if there's reasons why you wanna buy that other one. The one that you chose would differentiate it from the other ones, just to cover us for the contract, because they've changed, you can't just select it off of chapter thirty B. You can, but you actually still have to do your due diligence and disqualify the other two as whatever reason why you don't want those. So we would need something in writing to go along with the contract stating that you chose this one because it has lights on the top, or whatever the reason being that you feel is a better product, if it is the higher-priced one. If it's the lowest-priced one, it's not an issue, even off the state contract. So as long as you're aware of that, I don't have a problem. I wanna make sure you're getting a new one if you're gonna do this, and I support putting it on in the special. You know, I'm thankful that you're able to find a vendor that'll help us out, so we don't have to lease and go through those high expenses.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's a big help, and thanks to them for that. So hopefully, we can get to seventeen, because if it's approved on seventeen, you're gonna spend the money the next day.
Correct.
So, I mean, I'm gonna vote in favor of putting the article on, so I would hope that you get all of your stuff together now, so it's a matter of we can, you can have to quit right after that, you know, get with Madeline, make sure everything's ready to roll, whatever you need to do, so...
All right, I can check with her on that different insulation, because there is a difference with this machine, and those separated from the other two.
And that's what you wanna point out, because even with me and Food Services Net, I can't just buy the lowest price, I can't buy the higher-priced kind. It's amazing on state contract that they're not all the same price. They actually differentiate in pricing, for whatever reason, but you have to actually boutique it so that you get what you want and define why you want it, so we're justifying the purchase. It's a simple thing. The Madeline knows how to do that.
Okay.
Where I can help you, but just, and it could be just one item, Tom.
Right.
You know, it could have five tires, I don't know, never. You know, if that's the reason why you want it, and that's fine, so. I mean, so, I mean, I don't have anything else, and I'm ready to add on a motion to put it on. I think we're gonna have to purchase it.
Comment, Jim?
Yeah, Tom's answered. I mean, I've had a lot of communication with Tom, email and stuff, he's answered a question sufficiently, so I'm good to go. I mean, we need a loader.
Guess you could split the board. Just make sure, as Dario says...
Yeah, I'll get in touch with you.
...and you know how verbiage can slip you up in doing things when it comes to Tommy and Tom, so...
So, that would mean Tom is drafting the article, because it's the highway article, gonna go on the special on seventeen. Soon you can get the language for the article, so the board can review it and, you know, get it in the back key, because, you know, even with the solar, what's going on right now, the sooner the better. You know, it's gonna be, it's a month, it's six weeks away, right?
Yeah, I gotta draft it up now, just a couple more things, and I could submit it. You know, I could submit it tomorrow if you wanted, and send it in.
The sooner the better. I mean, you can just email it off to us, so we just review it, make sure it's worded correctly. You know, I would talk with, speak with Madeline first, just to make sure that there's something in there that we need the word in the article, specific to what you really want, just to make sure you get what you want. See, it'll get stuck afterwards, we approve it, and we look at it, and the article's written to whoever it says. You know, the motion was read this way, but the article says this, and then you're saying, oh, I gotta buy this, you know?
Right. Experience that, it's ready, so...
Yeah. I don't wanna get hung up on that either, so...
We do have an official quote, right?
Yes.
And that quote is good for how long?
Thirty days.
Yeah, it was on state contract, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's good.
I just want to put a particle forward and have the price quote.
The biggest issue that I'm facing now is the manufacturer is supposed to get another fleet of these loaders that I'm looking for towards the middle, end of December, but once he gets word on when those are coming in, it'll be in good shape, so...
So he doesn't have them right now?
Not right now. Right. Which goes into the leasing issue, or just the snow and ice with the local contractor? Or get something else, but...
No, I would just, I have my permission to call and tell him that, you know, we discussed that we're gonna put the article on, you know, most likely, the town's gonna say, yes, we need to get this, you know, we can't guarantee it, but...
Right.
I would say it's a pretty good bet that it'll fly somehow, and we'll get this piece of equipment, so, just to let him know.
Right.
So he's pushing to get the product in for it.
Right. Okay.
And me personally, I'm just going in favor of the whole rental thing. I think the only, the local contractor we talked about last week...
Yeah, there's one that I've really talked to, and is one I'm still waiting for some numbers on.
It's the most economical, it makes more sense.
Right, it does.
Because like you say, if we have, you can predict the weather, if we have a light, you're gonna pay seventy-five hundred dollars to have a machine set.
Correct. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't wanna do that.
I would rather it don't be, so... You got work to do?
So I would say, you know, we're, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we should just take a vote that we're gonna put the article on, identify the funding source later. So I would make a motion to include in the special town meeting the article for the highway department to purchase a new loader.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Then we'll identify thing after.
Thank you very much. Anybody at home has any questions about this situation, too, same thing, you can get in touch with me at the office, four-one-three, four-three-six, seven-six-seven-seven. Thank you. Mr. Saltis?
I have a question, Tom.
Yes.
I requested a quote from the three manufacturers you originally talked about. Our board is still waiting for that capital. And we're meeting tomorrow, correct?
Yeah, we are.
Yes, we are.
Can you drop him off?
Yeah, I just got the other call yesterday.
Send him off to the chairperson in here. We're here at six-thirty, right? Yeah. I mean, I know you were absent last week, Stanley, but we discussed it last week, we didn't take a vote without you, but it seemed like their permission in favor of it. We didn't discuss the funding source or anything like that, understanding that it's a necessity that could cross the town law if it didn't act, but...
I have no problem with purchase whatsoever. What are we buying, what are we getting?
Understood. Tom can write it.
That other quote that Mr. Saltis is talking to, I received on November twenty-seventh.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there another, is there an issue with a truck, a highway truck?
Not that I'm aware of. Could I be enlightened? There's, oh, actually, I take that back. There is a truck that has a blown rear end. Is that what you're talking about?
I don't know. It's on our agenda, I was just curious.
My recommendation, you wait till Tav's concerned, then this one's discussed, the loader right now.
Well, as long as he doesn't leave.
Just Tav's...
What?
As long as you don't leave right away.
He might be here. We'll expedite this, Mark, let's go.
Okay. Contract extension for Tanco lighting. As you know, Mr. Nardi had pretty much taken the lead and done all the footwork on purchasing our lighting parts instead of renting them for year after year after year, and along with that came a maintenance contract. That is five thousand, six hundred dollars a year, and it is time to renew. So the board has to make the decision whether we continue with the service or we do it on our own. Now, in that discussion, I was always under the impression, wrong actually, that the maintenance agreement was more or less like a attorney on retain. You pay X amount of dollars and you get, whether it is he fixes one light a month or five lights a month, the price was the same. This was explained to us that this has nothing to do, basically, with the physical maintenance of the product. This happens to do, this fifty-six hundred dollars is basically all administrative. Since the contractor is in California and another one that works is in Connecticut, and this and that is a nightmare trying to coordinate, getting somebody to come up and do the service for the lights, that's what the fifty-six hundred dollars a year that we pay. This Tanco ends up taking on all the responsibility of, once we notify them, they call the contractor, they order the parts, they do all the scheduling, they make sure that the process is followed through to completion. So it is not basically a maintenance, we're not getting labor out of it, we're getting the services of providing the work scheduled to be done. It basically comes down to four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars a month, is we're paying somebody to do the administrative work. Now, just seeing on the outside, looking in, the amount of work aggravation and scheduling that is involved in getting somebody in three different states to coordinate changing light poles in Warren, Massachusetts, I don't think we could really do it any less expensive. And who's gonna take on that initial extra workload to do that? So we are at the point now, this is what we signed on as, we are up for renewal, so we either have to renew and continue with the services that Tanco is providing, or we go down another road, so... What would you, gentlemen, like to do?
My suggestion would be to stay with Tanco for another year. I mean, if we wanna try and outsource it locally, something we can look into, but I still, I still think it's a pretty big bang to the buck.
I think it's gonna be a light, Mr. Nardi.
It will be, and I don't know if anybody really wants to take on a small project like this for what we have to offer. I mean, I think some of our biggest problems, and correct me if I'm wrong, back is when we have an accident, or an act of God, or a pole comes down, or a light gets taken out, you know, a lot of times, that's the responsibility of the vehicle, or whatever took that out, that person's insured, and that's getting reimbursed for the light fixtures and stuff, and that's some of the process that we still need to work out, how that's gonna, we're gonna get reimbursed, and it takes time. So there is some money that we have to put up outside of this, but the light's warranted for twenty years. I still think it's a good deal, in my opinion.
I do, too, and, you know, just my personal opinion, I don't, I think it would end up being a massive headache for whoever's gonna take the project on. I don't really see where it's gonna end up saving us a heck of a lot of money.
But you can still, Mark, we're spending fifty-six hundred dollars, we're saving probably thirty thousand in electricity on those lights alone. So, yeah, we're still ahead twenty-five thousand on this project. So it's still a cost savings to the town over the span of twenty years, you're gonna have a half million dollars right there in electrical savings, so...
Any opinion, Jim?
I just have a question, because I'm not that close to it, is we've been in contract for a year now, how are they performing against the contract? I mean, is it meeting expectations? Are we getting the service that we initially thought we were gonna get, or, I mean, I understand that probably we couldn't do it better, but I just wanna make sure that we're getting what we need.
I do think overall we are. The biggest challenge is because of the time difference, so...
Right.
There's always at least a day delay, for whatever reason, by the time I get back from Tanco, and then they call West Springfield. I can't call West Springfield directly, I have to call California. But there's an awful lot of information, too, like Carmelo was explaining to us, as far as keeping track of data on the ground and making sure that, you know, the right fuses go to the right ones and...
Our end of play right now, we're low on stock, too.
Right, and they maintain that. Universal is maintaining the stock for us and, you know...
You know, they did provide...
They've been great, Universal's been great, so...
Along with the, you know, the administrator, that they did include that they do have a price list, so we know upfront what an arm replacement is gonna cost, and the cost of this and that, so I...
And it's crazy. We'll be putting an article on the special, so we've had a lot of things that...
So if that's the opinion of the board, you need a motion to...
Again, but again, think about this, when we first started this, we didn't know what we needed to put.
Right.
The savings was there, we weren't sure how much we were allowed to put into that line to take care of these things.
Well, this is really our first year, kind of, first full year, yeah.
So, the learning curve, to see what we really need to do. Is it gonna be a thirty-five thousand, forty thousand dollar expenditure? No, it shouldn't be, but it is probably more than the fifty-six when you start weighing in all the other options.
But it's still saving us money, definitely.
Correct.
And that's basically what the board looks at the bottom line. So if that's the opinion of the board, or need a motion to...
So this contract is for the administration fees, and then there's invoice for the parts and the labor to do it?
They call, all we do is call, they set everything up, and then we get an invoice for, if it's a non, it needs to be replaced with a light or a fuse, or whatever it is, broken down, like I say, we do have a price list.
Yeah.
That corresponds to it, so...
So I'll make a motion for the chairman to sign the contract extension, or the new contract through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, with Tanco Lighting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Treasury warrants.
Let's do it.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to accept warrant number forty-two for a vendor for a one forty-five, six fifty-one, twenty-three cents, dated eleven nineteen twenty eighteen.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Also warrant number forty-three for payroll, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred, seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and warrant number forty-four for vendor for one hundred forty thousand, seven hundred, forty-three dollars and sixty... And warrant number forty-four for vendor for one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents, dated eleven twenty-six twenty eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion, carry on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last but not least, warrant number forty-five for payroll for forty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars and twelve cents. And warrant number forty-six for seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-four cents for vendor, dated twelve-three twenty eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No drawdowns or other invoices?
Okay, we have, uh, one, uh, that was added late to the, uh, the agenda is, uh, number ten, question the board of assessors to sign L.A. five form due for a change in the tax rate. It is our understanding that, once Rachel got all her figures in, there was a little bit of concern on the depart, uh, Department of Revenue that we were cutting it too close to the, uh, to the edge here, and make a long story short, that there has been an additional, twelve cents or something?
Fifteen.
Fifteen cents going to the tax rate.
Eighteen fifteen.
Eighteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. It's the cost of doing business, folks. You spend money, you gotta pay it back. I don't need a motion to sign L.A. five form due to that change.
Just a motion to accept the rate, correct? We're signing the L.A.?
To sign the new form, at the eighteen fifteen.
Okay, I'll make a motion to sign the L.A. form, accept the new, it should be the new rate of eighteen dollars and fifteen cents per thousand, as presented from the assessor's office.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is what it is, folks.
So, again, you may be calling people me again, what you spend in May, they, which you pay for in January. My taxes will go up two hundred and ninety-seven dollars next year, on my property, with the valuation increase and this increase.
Yeah, that's a point I know you brought up at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Nardi, that it's very easy to sign the credit card, but.
Yeah.
But when the bill comes in, you gotta pay it. Comes and concerns. Phil Lloyd.
Uh, just real quick, uh, to the members of the board, I, I put in the monthly report, I've been crunching numbers the last couple of months, but I, I did mention in the, in the, uh, in, in the recent report I just submitted uh, with regard to the fire department's operation, and I just think it's worth noting that at this point, I'm estimating that we're gonna see an unprecedented jump in service this, in the calendar year two thousand eighteen. And I just kinda wanna keep that on everybody's radar. Uh, over the last few fiscal years, I, you know, look back at five, six fiscal years, uh, we're usually see a four or five percent jump in, in call volume and everything. This year, so far, uh, we are well over our call volume already from last year. Uh, I'm gonna anticipate that we're gonna see anywhere from a twelve to an eighteen percent increase in the volume of, of, of the calls being, you know, taken care of by the fire department. So, I just wanna keep it on the radar when we start budget discussions and everything, because I don't think this is a trend that's gonna go away. I think this is a, this is where we're heading in the future, and, uh, I've never seen it jump as high as it has, but, uh, we are way over our call volume already, and we still have almost the entire month of December to go. So, I'm anticipating another forty-plus ambulance calls, you know, potentially another twenty, you know, you know, twenty-five fire calls on top of that, so we're gonna hit numbers we've never hit before, and, you know.
What do you consider the reason? Is it just?
Uh, I think there's a, a few factors in there. You know, I think there's some trends out there that we're seeing, you know, um, obviously, some, you know, some, uh, you know, drug-related stuff. I think we're seeing a lot more increase in psychiatric emergencies. Uh, it seems to be a, a one that's, that's out there quite a bit, uh, so there's a few factors that, that are in there. But, uh, I don't think that's gonna, gonna stop anytime soon. I think this is kinda the new reality of where we're, we're seeing it. But, uh, you know, on the other side of the coin, we're making more money than we ever have on the annual. So, you know, there is, you know, there's some give and take there. Um, you know, so there's certainly some funding, you know, avenues that we can look at in the future and everything, but I just want everyone to be aware that, you know, it's getting harder and harder to continue to provide the service with the same amount of people we have and the same amount of, you know, uh, and it just, that's not changing. You know, it's just the call volume that's going up for us, so, um, I just thought it should be noted, because I have mentioned in the last couple of ports, I did send an email to finance over it, but, uh, I know we're a ways away from the end of fiscal year, but, you know, I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna see some impacts to that.
Well, you gotta keep it on the radar, and then obviously, we're going to budget season.
Yeah, I, I mean.
It's already been, and obviously, you get what's been commented.
I, I more than likely will have to put a, a small article on the special for an overtime. I mean, I'm having, it's very, it's harder and harder for me to, uh, you know, to staff my, you know, having to call back full-time people more, uh, because I've lost a lot of part-time people due to, you know, either medical leave or school, go there, go back to college. So, there's a lot of fluid pieces to the schedule right now on a weekly basis, so that's affected me a little more than usual. But, you know, for a small overtime budget that we already have, I don't see that as a, as a huge problem, but we certainly need to look at it down the road. But, uh, I would more than likely have to ask for a few thousand dollars in a, of a special town meeting to cover that over, since that we're seeing right now.
Have you had an opportunity to look at what, what that does to the equipment out of them?
Equipment wise, I'm not really necessarily concerned with that, because we do the same maintenance on them all the time. We have, uh, you know, uh, you know, while we have a large call volume for a small town of our size, it's certainly not, you know, the equipment we have is good, so it's not overwhelming that, you know, they're, they're, the equipment we carry on the ambulance is, is a little beefier than the national standard, so, you know, as long as it's maintenance every year, we haven't seen any problems or deficiencies with that. It's, it's more just keeping up with personnel to, 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 you know, staff the trucks all the time. Um, so that's been a, that's been the, the challenge, you know, because, I mean, again, most of my people are not full-time. Uh, we lost a full-time position in two thousand ten, we have never gotten it back. And, and it's got to the point now where I just don't know how I'm gonna do it without that position anymore, to be honest. But, you know, certainly, we rely heavily on part-time, but unfortunately, part-time come and goes. They can only give what they're available for, and their full-time jobs take precedence, unfortunately, and that's the same with any department. I mean, I think police highway, where we've all experienced that, it just, they go where the money is, and you can't blame them for that, you know? So, uh, their, their, their family priorities become, you know, first and foremost, and most of my people are pretty much do it for next to nothing to begin with. So, um, it's more of a, you know, stepping up for their community thing anyway, so. There's a few different options, I've been looking at a whole bunch of stuff, I'm looking forward to budget season, they'll talk about all those things, and, you know, certainly, there's some things in there, but I just, this is way outside of the ordinary as to where the numbers are right now. So, you know, you know, like I said, a fifteen percent jump is, is pretty big when you're talking emergency services, that's a lot, so. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask Tom, um, you know, if he's having a problem with one of his trucks. Because I heard that, um, there was an issue with one of his trucks.
What's the issue you heard?
I'm asking you.
I haven't heard about it. It's coming from you, that I have an issue with my truck, I'd like to know what you heard the issue was.
Didn't you say that?
I have a truck with a blown rear end.
Is that gonna be replaced, or?
It's waiting for the final parts to come in, probably this week. Was there something else that you heard of?
Well, why is, um, highway truck on finance agenda?
It's news to me.
Can't answer that.
Okay.
Which truck was it, Tom? Has a plow or a?
Uh, truck two, it's a nineteen ninety-one Ford L eight thousand. Final repair price is gonna be around three thousand dollars. Plow truck.
Are you waiting for the part that'll be put in, back on?
Right, I found a, found a used rear end, uh, had to send the drive shafts out to get shortened and balanced, and just waiting for them to come back. It's all set. So, the cost of the rear end was two grand, but it actually came with four really good tires. So, as long as it holds up for a couple of years, until the truck can eventually get replaced with the rest of the fleet at some point, it would work. But, as I said, this is a nineteen ninety-one truck, I believe.
Okay. Your business, Dario.
I guess I'm not, I'd like to thank, I heard that Friends of the Town Hall had a pretty successful pie sale. Um, thank, um, the ladies who baked and put everything together and sold the pies. I mean, you know, for years, they've been working hard to raise funds for the town hall, so it's very much appreciated. I know they're trying some new fundraising ideas, or trying to come up with some ideas. I heard something about a selection spaghetti supper, but I won't comment any further than that, but, um, so I, I'll give them credit, and, you know, thank you for, for the efforts. I also did hear last night at the Solar slash Planning Board meeting, I think that Planning Board will be holding a hearing for the, uh, auditorium for the.
Yeah.
Auditorium, that'll be on in the seventeenth, so I guess that's good news, because I just was a little bit concerned if we're actually gonna have the hearing time, but from what I've gathered, they're gonna have it.
That's for, from what I read, I think it's December twentieth, Dario.
So, other than that, sir, I don't have anything else at this point.
I'd just like to thank everybody that came out for the tree lighting ceremony. It was very good attendance down there. Seemed to have gone well, so, thanks, everybody.
Uh, that was my only thing, you know, the Friends of the Town Hall, sir, the fire, police departments, uh, Cornerstone Bank, Manuel Church, uh, the water department had a fire pit out in front, and obviously, the holiday decorating committee. I apologize if I left anybody off, but it takes a lot of work by a lot of volunteers to put something like that on and join, not in a good, decent weather and.
Decent weather and decent turnout.
With a decent turnout, and thanks, you, to all the folks that, that had anything to do with that. It wouldn't happen if it wasn't for you folks, so, thank you very much. Next meeting date, December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, seven P.M.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with G.L., chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, uh, not to return to open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go, go, go. Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah, folks, thank you very much. Another meeting.